Yeah. I had two, but I know I'm going to be my special. File. We have a bad one. Two or three. Our students.
It's immediately high.
So they didn't. Yeah. And if you chose this call. You were what? Mary. Oh, yes. I was. Bud was from last year. I'm watching. I think. Yeah. Riding across from the ferry tops.
Well, as soon as I can hear.
I had a branch office in Rye Harbor. I used to take the C plane up there. I was. We had some friends who just worked.
Bobby Fair, you say it's six gooder and so on.
It is, isn't it?
We did five. He said, "Mayor, it's five gooder."
I was in pretty much. I was in two down my nose.
Hello.
Shackled.
Be happy to.
IVs.
Did it take you to know that it was your pension? How many days were you in pain?
I went there Friday. I called my name. Went back Tuesday after the first.
Okay, you guys are gonna live along, huh?
All right.
Got close.
I'd like to call the city council meeting of May the 7th, 2013, to order. Sondra, would you please call?
Kenyon?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
Tennant? Shopmire? Adam?
Here. Long?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Marsh?
Here.
Mayor Jordan? Here. Would you join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before I get into the consent agenda, there's an item on the consent agenda that is to be pulled. Number four, the Community Development Block Grant Housing Program. Resolution approving budget adjustment in total amount of $1,195. Recognized community development block grant income received from a housing program lien payoff. I believe there's an explanation of why we're pulling this from Yolanda. All right. I will be asking you all to table it, right?
Yes, we're asking that this be, we're gonna table it indefinitely. Correct? We're asking that this be tabled because we had a clerical error on that, and so we'll be bringing back corrected item at the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions from Yolanda or anything? And so, I need someone.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to table item four, Community Development Block Grant Housing Program.
And it's being tabled indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely, okay.
Okay. Everybody good? All right. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yeah. This is the roll again? Here?
No.
No, no, this is the table.
On the table, yes, yes. I didn't hear what the mayor said.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I apologize.
Patty?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. There we go. All right. Before I do get on into the consent agenda, I would like to have the AP students from Ramay Jr. High stand up and be, uh, yes, thank you all for being here. Thank you all. Okay. On the consent agenda tonight, number one, we have the approval of the April 16th, 2013 city council meeting minutes. Number two, animal services donation revenue. Resolution approving budget adjustment in total amount of $9,392, representing donation revenue to animal services for the first quarter of 2013. Number three, Rangers Pantry Pet Food Bank. Resolution approving budget adjustment in total amount of $405, representing donation revenue to the Community Services Division, Rangers, Pantry, Pet Food Bank, and for the Senior Giving Tree event. Number four has been tabled. Number five, McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated Amendment Number One, Task Order Number Nine. Resolution approving amendment number one to task order number nine of a contract with McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $7,500 for engineering services associated with the Executive Hangar Office Edition project at Federal Executive Airport Drakefield. Number six, Centerpoint Contractors Incorporated. Resolution awarding bid number thirteen dash twenty-three and authorizing a contract with Centerpoint Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $256,675 for construction of an executive hangar addition at Federal Executive Air Drakefield, Airport Drakefield, and approving a budget adjustment. Number seven, Centos Corporation. Resolution authorizing a contract with Centos Corporation pursuant to a cooperative purchasing agreement with the U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance for the rental of uniforms, mats, mops, and other items through March 31st, 2015, with two additional two-year renewal options. Number eight, repealing resolution number fifty-one dash thirteen, bid number thirteen dash twelve, Turex Equipment Services. Resolution repealing resolution number fifty-one dash thirteen, awarding bid number thirteen dash twelve and authorizing the purchase of three Ford F-550 service body trucks, Turex Equipment Services of North Little Rock, in the total amount of $127,545 for use by the Water and Sewer Division. Number nine, bid number twelve dash seventy-nine, Peterbilt Ford Smith. Resolution authorizing purchase of one 2013 Peterbilt rear load refuge truck with Wayne Body pursuant to bid number twelve dash seventy-nine from Peterbilt Ford Smith in amount of $220,995. Number ten, 2013 Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality E-Waste Grant. Resolution approving application for 2013 Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality E-Waste Grant through the Boston Mountain Solid Waste District of $25,000 for an E-Waste coupon redemption program. Number eleven, 2013 Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality Recycling Grant. A resolution approving application for a 2013 Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality Recycling Grant through the Boston Mountain Solid Waste District of $30,000 for indoor apartment recycling containers. Number twelve, Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission. A resolution approving an amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission relating to the Second Statement of Joint Principles, Stress Response, and Monitoring Evolving Water Quality Issues, authorizing an expenditure of up to $40,000 for the agreement and authorizing a $5,000 contingency.
Will we approve this consent agenda as read?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Under unfinished business, number one, amend 114.02 Farmers Market. An ordinance to amend 114.02 Farmers Market to transfer the current fee use of the south parking spaces on Mountain Street to the control of the Rural Mountain Producers Exchange Board. Close Mountain Street to traffic to permit sound amplification during Farmers Market and to make other changes. Uh, this was, uh, left on the third reading, and this went through ordinance review, I understand.
It did go through ordinance review committee, and we do have a, our recommendation was to remove Center Street from the ordinance as adopted, or the, from the amended ordinance as adopted at the last city council meeting.
Oh, hang on. Let me get all that now. Remove, the amendment would be to remove Center Street, right, Alan?
Yes.
And, uh, and close, basically, Block and Mountain and East. And I got that, is that kinda where we're headed? Now, I will say this, I did receive an email from, uh, Alman Shopmire that would like to see this left tabled until he can get back and vote, and I will leave that up to you. I'm just saying the request came in.
I would like to make that motion, please. Second.
Okay. Okay.
Well, let's have some discussion on the amendment, shall we? Or do you?
Well, you can, you can do as you please. Obviously, there were several different, uh, versions of the ordinance. We've had many versions of this. Uh, I did draft a version immediately after the ordinance review committee meeting that did remove Center Street and made some other minor changes to it as reflected by the will, I believed, of the ordinance review committee. After that, uh, and I sent that out, and that's what you have in your final agenda, that particular ordinance. Um, after that, Alderman Long pointed out that when we had that ordinance, it did not mention the free speech activities, only said nonprofits. And so, I thought that I could not add that administratively because that really was not discussed and voted on at the ordinance review committee. Instead, it was the version primarily that Alderman and Patty had set forth, with the exception that Center Street was removed. And so, I said that would have to be an ordinance amendment that would be presented here at that time. I also looked at the ordinance, uh, the whole code section, and noted that there was one internally inconsistent part of that where part of the ordinance says that food trucks could sell at the Farmers Market, and yet another part of the existing section says, "These are the articles you can sell," and none of it was prepared food. So I felt like if you were gonna allow prepared food to be sold, we need to make sure and have it in there. I also made a suggestion only that the food trucks, if they're going to be allowed, be held basically through similar standards that we require for sidewalk mobile vendors, that they must keep the area clean, get rid of all the refuse around them, and take the refuse away from them. So I included that also as a possible amendment, if that's what you all wanted, and I sent that to you in my memo of May 3rd, uh, Friday. And so, at this point, really, the one that you have before you is the one that was, I guess, was the amendment passed, uh, at the last meeting? I was not here, I was stuck in Chicago.
What was the vote on this at the ordinance review?
I know that Jason read, I think, uh, a proposal, an amendment, uh, at that meeting, but was that amendment never voted on?
That's correct. We tabled it with the motion on the floor.
Okay. So actually, the current one is the very first one that we have. There's not actually been a, to my knowledge, then, an amendment of that very first one.
Okay. Let me ask the council this. Does the council wish to wait two weeks before we have this full discussion, or do you want to discuss? I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel of where y'all wanna go.
I think we should wait until we have our other two alterment here.
Okay. So, we have a motion to table. Is everybody good with that? All right. Um, I guess, Sondra, would you call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Moving to number two. Number two, RPD 12 dash forty-two eighty-four. Park Hill at Mountain Ranch. An ordinance establishing a residential plan zoning district titled RPD 12 dash forty-two eighty-four, Park Hill at Mountain Ranch, located at the southwest corner of Persimmon Street and Mountain Ranch Boulevard, containing approximately 2.23 acres. Amending the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville and adopting the associated master development plan. Uh, I will entertain a motion to go to the third and final reading. Don't we have to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Moving to number two. Number two, RPD 12 dash forty-two eighty-four. Park Hill at Mountain Ranch. An ordinance establishing a residential plan zoning district titled RPD 12 dash forty-two eighty-four, Park Hill at Mountain Ranch, located at the southwest corner of Persimmon Street and Mountain Ranch Boulevard, containing approximately 2.23 acres. Amending the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville and adopting the associated master development plan. Jeremy?
Mayor, council, this item was actually heard back in, uh, January by the planning commission, and last, um, to you back in April, so I just wanted to remind you of what this, um, uh, this proposal is. The applicant has requested it be delayed until tonight. He is here tonight to answer any questions. Um, essentially, it's a property containing 2.23 acres located in the Mountain Ranch Phase One subdivision in West Fayetteville. Currently, directly behind these lots are existing single-family lots, and in front of them are apartment buildings. The proposal is to have a transition with smaller, single-family lots in between those. This PZD was actually approved in its same form back in 2009, it simply expired, and developers ready to move forward now, and so they were required to bring back, um, the plans for this approval. And, um, city staff recommended in favor, finding it compatible with surrounding land uses and consistent with our city plan 2030, particularly in finding ways to transition between multifamily and lower-density, single-family. Uh, and the planning commission also agreed with that with a seven to zero, um, vote in favor of this PZD request. So we're recommending this be approved tonight.
Any questions for Jeremy on this? Good? Okay. Um, would the applicant like to say a few words?
Good evening, city council. Uh, my name is Aaron Worth. I'm the applicant. I'm with Cobblestone Homes, uh, developer. I also represent the, uh, Mountain Ranch Property Owners Association, and, uh, been working on this project for, I guess, since at least 2009. Seems like forever. We've been here in front of you several times, and, uh, things just never lined up. Either the people in the subdivision weren't on board, or the city wasn't on board, or I wasn't on board, or the bank wasn't on board. And I think, as of forty-three minutes ago, if I can hold it together for, uh, I got everybody on board. So, um...
Immediate vote.
Let's get a vote, yeah. Um, yeah, I think, uh, we, we did last, last, uh, time you had your meeting, I was actually at the Mountain Ranch Property Owners, our annual, uh, meeting, and we discussed it, and there was, um, some, some small questions come up, and nothing, nothing major, and, uh, as you, I don't think there's anybody here that's speaking for or against it, but everything in that meeting was basically positive minus a few questions. So, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have on it, and hopefully, we'll actually go do this project.
Okay. Any questions for Aaron? Thank you, Aaron. Is any other public comment on this? If none, I'll bring it back to the council. We're on the third and final reading. Any final comments from the council on this? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Shop, uh, Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. We're now going into some public hearings. On the first public hearing, the raising and removal of 320 West North, I understand there's been something that has developed on that?
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. Um, as of 4:15, this, um, bill has been paid in full by the property owner, so we're no longer needing to impose a lien, and we're requesting that this ta, this is tabled indefinitely.
So I would ask for a motion to table indefinitely?
I would say that since this is a potential lien on the title, normally, I would say let's table indefinitely, then it would die on December 31st. I would instead recommend, in this particular case, why don't we just vote the resolution down so there's no cloud on the title?
So we just vote against the resolution?
That's, that's good.
Okay. All right. Is there any other public comment on this? See, now I'm bringing it back to the council. Um, we need a motion and a second to vote against the resolution, or just vote it up and down?
You could either have a motion for the resolution, everybody vote against it, or a motion to deny the resolution, and...
Everybody vote one way or the other?
I move we deny the resolution.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to deny the resolution. Everybody clear with that now? Okay. All right. Any comments from the council before we vote? All right. Sondra, please call the roll.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. On the second one, raising and removal of 1717 South Sterment Avenue. Resolution ordering the raising and removal of dilapidated and unsafe structure owned by Mary Lou Guthrie located at 1717 South Sterment Avenue, and the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas approving a budget adjustment. We will open that up for the public hearing now.
In early March of this year, Code Compliance responded to a, a request from the fire department concerning this house on 1717 Sterment. This house is fire damaged, and we went and inspected and saw that it, um, could be in violation of unsafe building, City Code 17309. We brought the, um, chief building official in, and he did determine that it was in violation. We sent the property owner a notice of violation on March 14th, and we also sent a notice of public hearing concerning this public hearing today. And we sent that to the property owner, and we also sent it to, um, the legal department of the commissioner of state lands, since it has been certified to the commissioner of state lands. We have spoke, spoken to the estate, and they are currently working with us to hopefully, um, demo that themselves, but we are asking that this resolution and budget adjustment be passed.
Is there any questions for Jeremy?
I just wanted to remind the, the council, obviously, uh, you got an even more in-depth analysis and showing the pictures and everything of this dilapidated structure at your agenda session, and you can take that into account when you make your decision.
Is there anyone else that would, uh, like to speak publicly on this? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council on the resolution?
I move we pass the resolution.
Second.
Everybody good? Comments?
Yeah, I just think it might be a good time, since we have a bunch of students here. You all are brilliant, bright students, and I don't think you would ever go in a place like this, but we're looking at pictures here with bright blue signs that say "Code Compliance," and when you mark things like this, could you tell us a little bit about how you determine what the dangers and, and what this means to those of us who might think this would be a fun place just to, to go in and check it out?
This one's an easy one. It was, um, a lot of fire damage. The, it's structurally, you can just tell as you walk by, it's, um, gutted out, burned out. So this one's an easy one. It's the ones that you don't, the, the broken window type syndrome, where you don't really understand that it is structurally sound. The floors are, um, broken, or they can fall, the, like, you walk up to the front door, and the patio could collapse. And these are the public safety issues that we are charged with, and we work with police and fire to identify these, um, structures, and we also, um, rely on citizen calls and neighborhood to call and let us know that there is an issue at a house. And we don't just arbitrarily say this looks bad. We get the chief building official out that is, um, very knowledgeable in this to determine that it is, and then we go forward with the paperwork to raise and remove. And the budget adjustment that we're asking for is something that is from the general fund, and like the, the previous one, we get this money back, it returns back to the general fund.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. We have a motion and a second, correct? All right. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Under new business, number one, RZN 13 dash forty-three thirty-four, 2925 Old Missouri Good Shepherd. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13 dash forty-three thirty-four, for approximately 3.8 acres, located at 2925 Old Missouri Road, from residential single-family, four units per acre, to P1 institutional. Okay?
This is about four acres in the southwest corner, excuse me, of Roland Hills Drive and Old Missouri Road. It's currently zoned, um, RSF four, and it contains the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, which has been there for a number of years, with the parking lot also, also associated with that. Um, their city plan 2030 shows the site, um, in the future to be neighborhood, residential neighborhood, which includes, um, low-intensity non-residential uses such as churches, um, institutional uses such as this. This request is to rezone the property from the RSF four designation. Obviously, it's not being utilized for single-family development, nor is it intended to be in the future, and to rezone it, um, to make the zoning map essentially consistent with what's there, what has been there for decades. Um, and the request is to go to P1 institutional, which allows cultural and recreational facilities as the primary use on the property. Um, this does a, a few things. One, it makes the zoning map consistent with the actual land use, which I mentioned already. It also prevents the church from having to go through conditional use permit every time they want to expand outside the walls of their structure or change something to the property, which really just adds red tape, um, to their ability to, to thrive there in that location. Uh, so we are recommending approval as to the planning commission with a nine to zero vote.
What questions do they have for Jeremy on this? Anything? Okay. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. Please introduce your second.
My name is Tim Maddox. I'm principal with DMX Architecture. None of the church's representative on the project or the rezoning. I just want to reiterate what Jeremy had to say. This is about streamlining the process. We, uh, we have a, at least one project coming up, a new monument sign that would need to fall into the new zoning and some other projects that have been talked about. So again, this is just about trying to streamline that process. So now I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. All right. Anyone else? See, now I'm bringing it back to the council.
May I take another moment of privilege and tell the students something else? So I think it took me a while as, as a city council member to learn what came first, next, and last on a zoning issue, and how those things got to the council. And so, when Jeremy was talking, if you had to take a quiz, there'd be a lot of things that, that I learned. One thing is that it went to planning commission first, and it was, it was nine to zero. And so, the planning commission is making a recommendation that it be approved, and I, I think that's kind of important when we consider issues like this. And then the other thing is that only the city council can rezone property, right? And so, the vote of the city council will change this, this, change this use. And so, I think the students need to just kinda hear, hear what we're doing here, because it's a big deal. When we look at the city's plans and we look forward to 2030 on the ma, on the things that citizens have had input in, we have to be very careful when we make a vote to rezone. So, I just want to point that out to you all, that it may not seem like a big deal from your seats, but from our seats, it's a really big deal to rezone property. Hey.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, and so...
I move that we accept this.
I need a motion and a second, go to the second reading.
Oh, I move we, uh, move, go to the sec, suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Okay. Did we get a second on that?
Yes, we did.
Okay. We got a motion and a second, go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
which includes low intensity non-residential uses such as churches, institutional uses such as this. This request is to rezone the property from the RSF4 designation. Obviously it's not being utilized for single family development nor is it intended to be in the future and to rezone it to make the zoning map essentially consistent with what's there, what has been there for decades. And the request is to go to P1 institutional which allows cultural and recreational facilities as the primary use on the property. This does a few things. One, it makes the zoning map consistent with the actual land use which I mentioned already. It also prevents the church from having to go through conditional use permit every time they want to expand outside the walls of their structure or change something to the property, which really just adds red tape to their ability to thrive there in that location. So we are recommending approval as to the planning commission with a nine to zero vote.
What questions do they have for chairman on this? Anything? Okay. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Tim Maddox. I'm principal with DMX Architecture. None of the church's representative on the project or the rezoning. I just want to reiterate what Jeremy had to say. This is about streamlining the process. We have at least one project coming up, a new monument sign that would need to fall into the new zoning and some other projects that have been talked about. So again, this is just about trying to streamline that process. So now I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Seeing none, bring it back to the council.
May I take another moment of privilege and tell the students something else? So I think it took me a while as a city council member to learn what came first, next and last on a zoning issue and how those things got to the council. And so when Jeremy was talking, if you had to take a quiz, there'd be a lot of things that I learned. One thing is that it went to planning commission first and it was nine to zero. And so the planning commission is making a recommendation that it be approved and I think that's kind of important when we consider issues like this. And then the other thing is that only the city council can rezone property, right? And so the vote of the city council will change this, this, change this use. And so I think the students need to just kind of hear what we're doing here because it's a big deal when we look at the city's plans and we look forward to 2030 on the map, on the things that citizens have had input in, we have to be very careful when we make a vote to rezone. So I just want to point that out to you all that it may not seem like a big deal from your seats, but from our seats, it's a really big deal to rezone property. Hey.
Thank you, Ron. And so...
I move that we accept this.
I need a motion in a second, go to the second reading.
Oh, I move we go to the second, suspend the rules and go to the second.
Okay. Did we get a second on that?
Yes, we did.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second, go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
And ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13-4334, for approximately 3.8 acres located at 2925 Old Missouri Road from residential single family for units per acre to P1 institutional.
I move we suspend the rules, go to the third and final reading.
Second. We have a motion in a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13-4334, for approximately 3.8 acres located at 2925 Old Missouri Road from residential single family for units per acre to P1 institutional. And I might tell our students, ordinances have to be read three times out loud and in full at a city council meetings, at different city council meetings unless the rules are suspended by at least two-thirds of the city council. And that's what they just did so that this ordinance could be actually voted on tonight rather than in a month.
Okay.
That took me a long time to learn too. Thank you.
Okay. Any final comments from the council on this? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, RZN 13-4359, 1851 East Huntsville Road, Come and Go. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13-4359, for approximately 1.9 acres located at 1851 East Huntsville Road from I-1 General Industrial to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial. Kit?
Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of following described property from I-2 General Industrial to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial as shown in exhibits A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. In section two, the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the zoning, official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in section one above.
As a bit of history, that in 2005, the city of Fayetteville acquired approximately 11 and a half acres at the southeast corner of Huntsville Road and Happy Hollow Road. There was an existing Tyson Mexican original plant there on the properties. Actually, it was a grocery store before then. That property was, that structure was approximately 124,000 square feet. It's since been demolished and the materials were still being sorted. The city split off about 1.3 acres and constructed a new fire station and has zoned that property for the fire station institutional use again several years ago. And since then, has the property essentially remained as it is. In February of this year, the city council approved a resolution to sell off a portion of the property, about two acres of the northeast corner of the property. This was to sell the property to Come and Go for a new convenience station and gasoline fueling station. The agreement with that resolution included a cost share with the city for new roads and driveways within the site and also demolition of that old factory building. Also as a part of that resolution, the city council determined that for the purposes of the sale, the parcel needed to be rezoned so it wouldn't remain I-2 so that in the future, you know, one day Come and Go likely won't be there on that site in 30, 50 year, maybe sooner. And we didn't want to keep it as I-2 General Industrial. So we determined it needed to be rezoned for an appropriate use. At that time, it was communicated that it should be rezoned to Neighborhood Commercial which is our C-1 designation or another zoning district agreeable to the buyer. The representative Come and Go has submitted correspondence to us stating that C-1 is fine with them and so that's what we're recommending. It's a Neighborhood Commercial. Does not allow a lot of the uses that you see in C-2, so we felt more comfortable with this type of zoning designation. I do want to make sure that everyone's aware, this is just the two acres, not the entire remaining portion of the site. The city staff plans to conduct a mini charrette or neighborhood master plan for that particular site this summer. And so we'll be asking for input from citizens and you all as part of this process to formally really plan for that, plan for that property, understand the feasibility of different land uses, what is appropriate, what's desired in that area, and then that will help us to determine what we should zone the rest of the property in the future for future needs. The planning commission did vote in favor of this request and staff is recommending in favor as well.
Okay. What questions do we have for Jeremy? Okay. What public comment do we have on this?
Aubrey Shepherd. I understand the need to make this rezoning. I don't think I'm saying anything against the rezoning.
Aubrey, I'm having just a little trouble here.
I'm sorry. I'm not necessarily against the rezoning. I have no opinion on that except I know it's what it's got to be to be built there for the Come and Go store. The, I wanted to share with you the situation of that land. Several watersheds meet right down below there on the southeast side. So it's very critical that the construction as it's planned, and this is the start of it, it'll be able to start very soon. I photographed the rubble being taken away yesterday. It's going pretty fast. I don't know if it's on schedule or not. But anyway, the, it is, but the watershed protection there can be handled if, you know, we always hear that developers are not going to increase the flow from land. And almost always, it's evident that they do because even though that's already a site that's impaired, paved and so forth, unless they capture water on the site somehow, which they should do for their, and I think they have it in their plan, they've talked about it, so I hope that happens and it's effective because you've got more potential for more flooding and more pollution of Beaver Lake still possible there if it's not done right. So you've got to look at the property to the west, to the southwest, and then back up to Happy Hollow and some from the east as well and recognize that there is a lot of water going down there. It's a pretty place down there where they, where it flows together, some of the streamlets come together, but it's also a dangerous place that, that has potential if it's not protected. That needs to be protected as well and some water needs to be held on the site with some of the things that other green developers have done, tanks on the surface, things like that because I'm sure that there won't be much natural soil left on the actual construction site, so we don't know if it was all red dirt before it was paved. I guess that's turning out, people can see what's underneath it right now. But anyway, I'm just asking that you make sure that they follow through on any good green development, things that they can do there. And I got here late for the mention of Mary Guthrie's property a while ago. You all passed the thing, I understand, to have it razed. I talked to a family member today and they do have plans to try to do it themselves and meet the requirements and I hope so because that's the flood plain. Her house is right on the edge of the flood plain. And with more building going on up on Martin Luther King, Walmart and land further up and not so far up such as the, let's see, the property at, well, the view will send a little water that direction, but the next apartment complex to the west will add to the flow that goes down there. So more houses along the north side of that stream which is the west arm of the town ranch of the west fork of White River will be potentially flooded by anything growth up there. So I hope her land, and I guess most of you remember when she was, Mary Guthrie was killed by a train in Greenland several years ago. And she was a teacher and a devoted citizen of our community. So I'd like to see it, Mary Guthrie Park unless the family chooses to rebuild on the site, that's a possibility, but Mary Guthrie Park and she, she's worthy of that. If you, if you knew her, you'd know what I'm talking about. Anyway, thank you on both subjects.
Thank you, Aubrey. Is there any other public comment on this? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council.
I move we suspend the rules, go to the second reading.
Second. We have a motion in a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13-4359, for approximately 1.9 acres located at 1851 East Huntsville Road from General Industrial to Neighborhood Commercial.
I move we suspend the rules, go to the third and final reading.
Second. We have a motion in a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13-4359, for approximately 1.9 acres located at 1851 East Huntsville Road from General Industrial to Neighborhood Commercial.
Any final comments from the council? Yes, Matthew.
The past few times we've seen a rezoning request like this, I've really tried to make a point of talking about our form-based codes and advocating for them. And I'm not going to do that this time because I think the benefits over what is there is so clear, but it's something that I don't think we should forget. And even though it may not be important this time, the next time something like this comes up, it's something that I think we should continue to pay a lot of attention to.
That's a good point. Anybody else? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Number three, JWC Environmental. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving agreement with JWC Environmental in the current amount of $21,658.24 for channel monster repairs and approving future such repairs as needed as, at the Hamstring Sewer Pump Station. Tell us about that channel monster.
Let me, let me read this one there.
I'm sorry.
Whereas the Hamstring Sewer Pump Station has a quote "channel monster" unquote inline screening and grinding unit which protects it and the west side wastewater treatment plant from large foreign objects entering the pump station. And whereas a failure of the channel monster could lead to a catastrophic failure in a damage amount exceeding $400,000 to the Hamstring Sewer Pump Station. And whereas JWC Environmental is a sole source provider for repairing a quote "channel monster." Now therefore it be ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical and therefore waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves an agreement with JWC Environmental in the current amount of $21,658.24 and approving future channel monster repairs by JWC Environmental at the Hamstring Sewer Pump Station.
Now David, tell us about the channel monster.
David Jurgens, Utilities Director. It is indeed referred to by name as a channel monster. It slices, it dices, and it does all of those other things. You'd be amazed at the things that can get into our sewer system. I have personally pulled couch cushions, bicycles, bowling balls, tuba fours. You know, you have a manhole every 250 feet, heaven only knows what's going to get in there. This channel monster is a grinder. It's a large grinding unit. If you've ever seen it, you hope like heck it never fall in because you'll disappear. The, it can grind up just about anything man can make and put in, in the system. With a 48-inch diameter pipe coming straight into it, just about anything will fit as well. The channel monster protects our largest sewer pump station which when we constructed it new five years ago, cost about six and a half million dollars. The pumps are 350 horsepower motor and pump combinations. If they break, it would cost us at least $400,000 to repair or replace one of those pumps. The channel monster costs a lot less than that, does a very, very difficult job. When the channel monster is not in service, like right now, when it's not in the system, we have actually a bar screen that just has bars on, I think about two inch on center that we lower down into the channel so that all the flow goes through that. It catches any large items and don't pass through it. It has to be cleaned several times a day. That job is incredibly unpleasant for one. Think about it. It's not the safest job in the world. Secondly, it has potential to create additional odors and is not nearly as good as the channel monster is in doing its business. It doesn't simply protect the station, but everything that gets ground up doesn't get into the wastewater plant and then cause problems all the way through the entire process. So what we're asking for here is two things. One is the approval of this particular contract for a little over $21,000 for the current repair, but secondly, so that next time when we, if we, if and when we have to make a repair, which again, it sees very hard service, so we will at some point, we can expedite the repair and have a bid waiver so we can just pull the unit out, ship it off, get it fixed and then bring the unit back.
What questions do we have for David on the channel monster?
If we'd like to have a council tour to see what it's like to see one of these things, I'd be happy to do that when we have a time.
Chuck a few bowling balls in there. You'd like to feed it.
Bowling balls.
Do we, do we have any public comment on the channel monster? Well, seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. What's the wishes of the council on the channel monster?
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second. We have a motion in a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving an agreement with JWC Environmental in a current amount of $21,658.24 for channel monster repairs and approving future such repairs as needed at the Hamstring Sewer Pump Station. I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second. We have a motion in a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving an agreement with JWC Environmental in a current amount of $21,658.24 for channel monster repairs and approving future such repairs as needed at the Hamstring Sewer Pump Station.
What final comments do we have on the channel monster? Unlike the Loch Ness Monster, we do have pictures that it does exist.
Can I say something to our students again? So when you hear something like this about how much money it costs to run sewer system and protect it and clean it and get things out of it, you're going to be owning the homes we live in now someday and be the next citizens in our city. Please do everything you can to encourage your families and your friends and yourselves to take good care of our sewer system. It's really important that we, that we have a great sewer system in our city and I think it's good that you all got to hear how much it costs for us to take care of it.
Okay.
I'm not a teacher. I just keep thinking of things. I'm so happy y'all are here tonight.
All right. Any other comments, Sondra? Channel monster. Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. David, take care of it and feed it. All right. What other announcements do we have tonight?
All right, Mayor, the announcements for our council and citizens are, this week is the International Compost Awareness Week. It was the 5th until May the 11th. We're having a tour of the city's compost facility on Friday, which is May 10th at 10:00 a.m. If you would like to see how your yard waste and the compost materials we pick up are processed into actual compost for sale to our citizens. Again, that's Friday at 10:00 a.m. At the Solid Waste Facility located at 1708 South Armstrong Avenue. On Friday, it is the kickoff for our Bike to Work Week. The mayor is doing a proclamation and a bike ride from the Fayetteville Town Center to Mellow Mushroom Pizza Restaurant out off of Joyce Boulevard. That's also Friday, May 10th and it begins at 5:15. Bike to Work Week is actually the week of May 12th through the 18th and it's where workplaces are encouraged to sign up for the Workplace Challenge and win prizes for workplaces whose employees ride the most miles in the week of Bike to Work Week. On Saturday, May the 11th, the University of Arkansas has its graduation commencement services for all colleges except the School of Law. The all-university graduation begins at 8:45 a.m. at the Bud Walton Arena and then all other graduations are either held at Bud Walton Arena, Verizon Ballroom, Student Union, or the John Barnhill Arena. So you can check out the ur.edu site for those who have visitors coming into town for the graduation schedule. And then the School of Law has their graduation the following Saturday, May 18th, Fayetteville Town Center at 2:00. On May 16th is the Fayetteville High School graduation at the University of Arkansas Bud Walton Arena. We're currently accepting registrations for adult softball, summer 2013 program, league, first-touch soccer registration, swim lessons and be active summer camps. So we encourage citizens to check out our Parks and Recreation site. There's lots of opportunities for summer program enrollment as schools are getting out and free time is more available. Thursday, May the 9th, the Fayetteville Animal Shelter, City of Fayetteville Animal[1735.26] That's Renew, Energize and Donate, uh, their corporation has selected the shelter to be the, uh, site that they want to sponsor for involvement in the community this year. That means that they are, um, helping us provide ten-dollar adoption fees for the adoption of dogs and cats all day on, uh, Thursday, May the ninth. And if you adopt on that day in this program, you'll also get your first free vet, uh, exam as a part of a packet that'll be given out for those who adopt that day. Saturday, May eighteenth, um, at four p.m., the City of Fayetteville, the Fayetteville Convention and Visitor Bureau and the Fayetteville Forward Historic and Heritage Resources Action Group are sponsoring a historic walk of downtown Fayetteville, um, that will meet at the Town Center area at four p.m. on the eighteenth. And lastly, we now have confirmed that we have a location in time for the Rupel Road Design Input Session for citizens who are, um, anywhere over town, but particularly our Ward Four area where we will be constructing Rupel Road from Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard to, um, actually the design elements go all the way to Mount Comfort. That design session will be on May the thirtieth, that's a Thursday, from five p.m. to seven p.m. at the Fayetteville Boys and Girls Club. And that's a design input session and not a, um, final review. So we'll be taking comments of the plans that the street committee looked at. And since this is a City of Fayetteville project and one of our few street projects, it isn't also a state project, we're doing the same format that the state follows by providing opportunities for public input and the design opportunity.
Okay.
Yes, as nominations committee chair, I want to say that it is now time, again, for citizens to make applications for our boards and commissions. You may go on our website and it is stated there, uh, what the openings are. And we do have several openings, so if you have applied in the past and did not get chosen, we hope that you will apply again.[1714.12]